Okay, bear with me. There we go. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Hinkley Township special meeting for the purpose of Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meeting approved February 22nd, 2022 minutes and vote on printing and mailing the Comprehensive Plan survey to every Hinkley resident. Can I get a second from one of the trustees?
Seconded by Sweattick. All in favor say aye. Aye.
All right. Welcome. You guys look great. We moved you around a little bit so our court reporter could see all of you. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to start with a roll call. Paul Easterling.
Here.
Dr. Griffiths, Maria Griffiths.
Here.
Lou Benson.
Here.
David Yatsko.
Here.
Richard Pearl.
Here.
Paul O'Neill.
Here.
Gary Wolney.
Here.
Brian Cadham has an excused absence. Jacob Studer.
Here.
Kara Pay has an excused absence. Kenton Grimes.
Here.
Oh, very good. Tom Schrader. Not here. I will get back to you on that. I thought he was going to be here today. Cindy Eggleman.
Present.
Jim Byloski.
Here.
Terry Walrath.
Here.
And David Manley.
Here.
Chris Kleena is on virtually this evening. I am here with trustee Astral and trustee Sweattick. Very good. Thank you for that. Things have changed a little bit. I emailed you, but for the public's understanding, the trustees decided that we didn't want alternates moving forward, so you are all official members. We did go about the process of selecting three more people to be a part of this board. One of them is already sitting here with you, so that was a mute point. Terry Walrath is joining us today. He is our new member. He had previously worked on a planning, a comprehensive plan committee like this, and the listeners were also chosen and they declined the offer to participate. So, Mr. Walrath, in the beginning, we gave everyone an opportunity to introduce themselves and give a brief overview as to why you wanted to be a part of this selection for the Comprehensive Plan Audit. Do you want a moment to do that?
Sure, sure. I didn't have anything better to do than I'd said. Terry Walrath, lived in Hinkley for 32 years, loved it here. I was a member of the zoning commission for 22 years, participated in a couple, what were then called, not the Polit- Comprehensive Plan, but the MPP, what the heck over that stood for, I don't remember right now, Master Policy.
Yes.
And I'm interested in zoning. I've always been interested in zoning, so I thought I would participate in this, and thank you for adding me to the committee.
We are pleased to have you, and you are already a big part of this committee and that you were regularly emailing the committee and had things that you wanted to add to the process, so we thank you for being a part of it. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from the February 22nd, 2022 Comprehensive Plan meeting. Can I have a second? Seconded by Astral. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm going to hold off on our second motion until you guys have finished up for the day. Does that sound like a plan, Arthur? All right, so the floor is yours, Arthur. Thank you for being here.
Evening, everybody. I was just mentioning before that it's nice that it's lighter out than pitch black for a shooting pretty everything, so. Share my screen. Well, again, thank you all for being here, and I want to thank everybody also for...
Good call, good call. Okay, here we go. Thank you again, everybody, for being here, and want to thank everybody for all the correspondence for the email that we've had over the last month since our last meeting. What I quickly wanted to do is just revisit why we're here, our project overview. I'll kind of go through those slides fairly quickly. Nothing has changed from the presentation that we talked about last time in terms of what a comprehensive plan is, what your role as steering committee members are, what our schedule is, but I'll briefly touch on that. The next topic I want to talk about was just to address some of the other, the conversation that we had in the last meeting. We had a few different talking points. We developed a few other kind of just maps and analysis to discuss with you, just to kind of shed light on some of the topics that we discussed. And then really kind of the meat and potatoes of this conversation, I don't know if you can tell, but I'm hungry this evening, is the community survey, what those questions are, how the format is going to be, how do we deliver those questions to the residents of Hinkley Township, what we've heard so far from all of you, as well as what we've heard from the public in terms of proposed questions. Our team, OHM, has put together a set of questions based on that, and we'll share that tonight and share it in a hard copy form with all of you, and then talk about kind of how we're going to go about finalizing the questions and ultimately the survey, and then talk timeline with that. So again, I'm just going to quickly go through this. This is all the same stuff that we were talking about last time in terms of our purpose and goal, why we're here, to identify if there's a need to change or update elements of the comprehensive plan or other policy documents. Again, we talked about what a comprehensive plan is based on the definition from the comp plan, that being a blueprint to define the community vision and providing a framework to guide the development of zoning and other plans and policies. We talked about some of what are those kind of policy instruments are in terms of evolution of zoning regulations, guiding capital improvements, the location construction of community facilities, and promoting economic development. We talked about your role as the steering committee, again, to give direction on how we should be engaging the community, and I think all of you have been doing that in terms of getting feedback from your neighbors, from your local residents, fellow residents, I should say, sharing your insights, acting as liaisons to the community, both for community groups and organizations, assisting us in doing this plan audit, by us, I mean OHM, and then ultimately reviewing the recommendations that we set forth before you on how to move forward. And then it's always good to remind ourselves of what our destination is, where are we going. And again, and that said, at the conclusion of this audit, our goal is to determine what changes are needed to the comprehensive plan, if any. If there are changes that are needed, how do we go about that to align with what we've heard to date? And if there are no changes that are needed to the comprehensive plan and everything's fine, or we perceive it as everything fine, are there other tools that can assist or that need to be developed to assist the township moving forward? Just reminding kind of where our process and schedule is. So we're at the phase two point. We're at the beginning, the outreach and putting out the community survey, and then where we will go from here, and we'll talk about this at the end as well, is when we begin to analyze what that survey, what the survey results are, talk about what ultimately needs updating, and then talk about the recommendations. So next, I wanted to go into just highlighting some of the things that we talked about last time. Not much change in terms of kind of the key topics. We continue to talk about what is the identity of Hinkley and how it's defined, right? So we kept talking about rural, bedroom community, but really focusing in on rural and what the definition of that is moving forward, as we all have different kind of variations on that definition. We talked extensively about the comprehensive plan and talked about the zoning code and how those two are speaking to one another and maybe not speaking to one another, and what the differentiations are between them. We talked a lot about conservation developments and design standards within those conservation developments within the township, and there'll be more of that here to follow. We talked about where we felt it might be appropriate to develop in the future. We also talked about preservation, which was a big topic of conversation last time. So what are areas that we should be preserving? That also tied back to the character question related to rural. And then some of the other topics that we hit on and talked about was agriculture. We talked about water and sewer infrastructure. We talked about sustainability as a policy and as a topic. We talked about senior housing. What is senior housing? What's appropriate? What's not appropriate? And then ultimately, we also talked about how this kind of culminates into formatting potential survey questions to go out to the community. So what I wanted to go into now is just kind of highlighting a few points from our last discussion, just to provide some additional insight and some thoughts for you all to consider. So one of the things that we talked about was conservation development, and one of the conversation points was the minimum acreage and the potential for raising that minimum lot size from where it is at one to two acres to maybe higher, and seeing if that would yield maybe a more desirable design or layout. But one of the things I wanted to highlight here, and I'm highlighting in these diagrams that we created, is that the minimum lot sizes doesn't necessarily yield maybe the results I think some members are thinking about or would like to see. So what we are showing here, I wonder if my mouse will work up there, yes. So parcels A, B, and C are all to be considered three different lot sizes. And as you can see, where the house is placed is based on those kind of dashed dotted lines, which are setbacks. So in the design standards, even for conservation development, there are certain front yard, rear yard, and side yard setbacks that have to be met from a minimum distance. And so what I'm showing here, just in this one example between the three different parcels, is that those front yard setbacks also play a role in determining how that house is situated on the parcel. Now, is it the only design standard that plays a role into it? Absolutely not. Minimum square footage of how big the house has to be, there's other components in terms of constructability and just overall site placement in terms of where a home can just naturally be placed on a site because of grading and other ecological features. But what I wanted to just get across here is that the lot size alone is not necessarily going to yield, I think, the results that folks are looking for for some of these developments in getting that rural feel. I think one of the comments that was made, and I apologize for not knowing which steering committee, steering committee member made it, was, you know, one of those rural characteristics is that setback, right, from the roadway, that the homes are set back a little bit further away. And so what I wanted to just illustrate here is that that front yard setback requirement that's in the design standards is a key component to that, just as much as the minimum lot size. So this is to say, does the minimum lot size help? It can help, yes, but there's other factors that we need to look at and not just the minimum lot size alone. I'll pause there just for a moment before I jump on to another subject to see if there's any questions from members of the steering committee.
That is how one with setbacks. That's more of a zoning thing, though, isn't it? That's not something you can...
Correct, correct. And that's part of this, just like the minimum lot size is part of the zoning as well, right? It indicates, you know, the minimum lot size for that zoning, for that zoning classification needs to be a certain amount. So again, just to illustrate that that alone is not necessarily, could yield maybe improved results from some of the conversations that we've been having. It's a combination of really kind of tweaking all the different standards within that section of the code for conservation development, and not even just for conservation development. You know, take the title of the slide away. It could just be for the residential section of the zoning code in terms of standards in order to get that, get that ultimate end product that everyone's looking for in terms of how future homes, future residential homes are developed and cited.
I'm curious how conservation developments can be used to mitigate the negative effects of development.
You say your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Paul O'Neill.
Thank you.
Paul, are you asking in general, or? Yeah, yes.
You can say that for later. I know you're in the middle of your presentation.
No, I think we can talk about it now. I think one of the benefits that it could provide is in terms of preservation of existing trees and kind of naturalized land. I just recently passed a couple of different developments, even in Brunswick and some of the other communities that we've been working in. And oftentimes, what you'll see in terms of residential development is kind of a clearing of the full parcel of land that they're looking to develop and starting kind of with a fresh slate. So the principle behind the conservation development is saying to the developer that there's a percentage of the land that can't be, that can't be touched in terms of just clear cutting for, for any type of development. So it's keeping that existing tree canopy, the existing vegetation that's there on that site. So that's really where, from the way I have always understood conservation development and those guidelines and those parameters, what the goal of that is, is to help preserve some of the natural vegetation and forested land that's there on a particular site that's been conglometed together.
Isn't it, Paul O'Neill, isn't it possible that with these conserva... I'm not sure how it works legally, but can't some of the, can't you use conservation development as a tool where the roads are left private to the conservation development, and so the town doesn't have the burden of snow plowing and maintenance of the roads?
I think that, I'm not familiar with examples, but I'm kind of going in the memory bank, and as those are developed, I think that can be part of the conversation with that community, that village, that township, that city, and the particular developer, or if that municipality is developing the conservation developments just in advance of any kind of development, that that can be part of the conversation.
One other, Maria Griffiths, when we were talking about, my understanding, some of that with conservation development wasn't even so much the individual house, but having the development start further back, you know, if you're 2018, there's one corporate park, then you'll see a road that goes over, and you have to go a couple football fields down before you start hitting the houses. And I think the idea was rather than the conservation land being behind the homes, if it's where the development started, then those homes are way back hidden and you don't see the smaller lot sizes from, you know, the road. The idea was you could still have those who wanted the smaller lot, but you preserve as you're walking or driving by.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point, and that's part of it, too. That's what I'm trying to illustrate here, is that it's not just one kind of piece of the puzzle. It needs to be a combination of the pieces in that puzzle to kind of elevate, I think, the design standard and the look and the feel that from our last conversations, both with the steering committee and the public, I think individuals were trying to get at, and that includes the buffering, right? That's that landscaping buffer, or just that buffering from the roadway to where the development starts, and making sure that there's standards and guidelines there to say, you know, this is what we want to see in that buffer zone. We want to see vegetation. We want to see landscaping. You know, in some areas, I know that we've, our company, OHM, has worked on landscaping standards, and we've set minimum calibers for tree types, maturity of trees to come in. So there's different things that you can do, and there's examples, I think, both across our area and the region that can be looked at to kind of set that, to make sure that the look and feel is what the community wants it to be, right? That it matches what's going on with the rest of the community. And I think that's, that's what I'm trying to illustrate here, is that it's not just one piece, it's a combination of pieces that I think need to be examined together, and then, you know, maybe retooled a little bit so that way it meets the overall goal and intention. All right. So the next thing I wanted to bring up was what we started talking about was a little bit of the lack of cohesion between the current zoning map and the future land use map that came out of the 2015 comprehensive plan. So this is the same slide I was talking to and showing to you last time, highlighting kind of where the existing zoning is right now on the left, and then the future land use map on the right. And again, just bringing up a former map that we showed that was done during the engagement process for the 2015 comprehensive plan, which asked individuals to show with a green or red dot areas to preserve and areas to grow. So just to remind you, green was areas to preserve, red was areas to go, grow, excuse me, and this is what started to, this is what started to give way to the future land use map, which started to inform the future land use map. So I just wanted to share that again with you all. And then as we get into this discussion about development, reservation areas and conservation and preservation, what we wanted to do was look at this future land use map, and what I wanted to show you was kind of highlighting where those are. So when we talk about development, and we're talking about development in general, based on the future land use map, and we can also do this with the zoning map, want to highlight the areas where that development would go, where that, you know, potential conservation area could be, where limited development would be. So in this map, the areas in red are showing where commercial development can locate. So these are areas that would either are zoned right now as either B1, B2, I1, I2, or in the future to match up with the zoning map with the future land use map would be zoned in one of these classifications. So again, when we talk about the potential for new development, these are the areas we're talking about within the township for new commercial development. So just thinking back to our conversation. So areas in red is where that new future development would ideally go, and you see that big swath along the West 130th corridor. And again, I think we're talking the, I think the idea behind that from the 2015 plan was to match and mirror what was going on on the Brunswick side of things with kind of their industrial zoned areas and commercial zones. When we talk about the reservation, we're just strictly kind of highlighting the Hinkley reservation, also talking about, you know, this can maybe inform any future land that could be preserved by the township, but that's where that is right now. So when we talk, where is that current preservation? This is where it currently is. When we talk about limited development, this is limited residential development. During the 2015 plan, these were the areas that were identified for maybe potentially using that conservation development as a tool, because there was the idea that maybe this land could start to be brought in together to reach that 100-acre minimum that's needed. So when we talk about limited development, again, highlighting on the future land use map, that's where this is within the township. Again, areas that are zoned R1 or R2 could mean utilizing that conservation development. But again, when we discuss new residential, the potential for additional residential areas, you know, this is the area that from the 2015 plan, I think, piqued the interest of the group that was working on that and of the residents at that time. So when we bring this kind of all together, you see the areas in red where we talk about where development could be. We see the areas in purple where that kind of limited residential development could go, and then we see the reservation. So the question, as we're talking about that future land use map, is, you know, what has changed? Is there the potential that, you know, that area for future commercial development, is that too big? You know, is that too expansive? Does it need to be downsized a little bit? Or is it, or is it just right? When we talk about kind of the areas to preserve, looking at, you know, potentially the areas outlined in purple, you know, there was that thought that that maybe could be redeveloped into residential, you know, is there land there that, you know, maybe the township wants to look at purchasing to preserve, right? Maybe not. So again, framing the question about development, about preservation, about conservation, just trying to frame it in a different way and shedding some light on, you know, based on the future land use map as it's showing now, these are the areas that we're talking about with respect to those particular topics. That's all for my kind of summary from our discussion last time before we get into the specifics of the community survey. So I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions, thoughts, comments just related to that. Again, this will be all shared with you after our meeting tonight, and it was just to kind of provide some additional context based on our conversations that we had at the last meeting. Yeah, Paul.
Paul O'Neill. You mentioned the, what's the existing condition. I haven't seen a map that shows the vacant land left in the town.
I think we have that in the, in the 2015 comprehensive plan. I don't know if I have that in a presentation or in a slide with me.
That's 2015.
But that's 2015, correct, correct. But that could be something, you know, as we talk about this, as we talk about this audit and looking forward, you know, having a better understanding of that could be part of the equation.
Because I'm looking at the purple area in the middle, that's already conservation development now, right? And then in the northern part of Hinkley, that's already developed as a, you know, two-acre subdivision.
Right, there's some of...
You get lost in real easy.
Right, I mean, right, there is some of this, because again, this is going off the 2015 future land use map. So there is some of it that has been, as you pointed out, you know, already developed, or, you know, whether it's residential or commercial, but just kind of wanting to frame it back into that context.
I'm just kind of afraid that it's a very wide brush you have here. Maybe we should be focusing on what's left.
No, that's...
Try to preserve that or be a little bit more precise about where we want to go with the rest of the town.
No, that's, 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 that's well, that's well spoken. Yeah, as we look at this, that's one of the questions I think needs to be answered, is whether or not this future land use map really does show what the future of Hinkley wants to be. And that goes back to the question of, if the answer, if the general answer is no, that it's not kind of reflective of where the township wants to go and where they want to develop or conserve or preserve, what have you, then I think part of that recommendation is reexamining that future land use map and really getting, to your point, Paul, right, getting more into, you know, what's, what's out there right now, and kind of maybe shifting the focus a little bit and talking a little bit more about preservation, for example. Because I think, as we go back to that 2015 plan, that conversation was there, but it didn't seem to be as prevalent as maybe that topic is right now as we're talking.
The other thing I, Paul O'Neill, the other thing I see missing from these diagrams is what's on the boundary. I mean, you just got to, you know, align where the town ends, like on the West 130th Street corridor, the, that's mostly Brunswick Township, that's owned by the Fullers. I mean, the whole, pretty much the whole, or halfway up that bound, and that's, that's all. Well, maybe, you know, you want to, you know, I drive down that 18, Route 18, and you have all these little houses, and then you have, it's like a, it's not integrated very well, and so you have some very neglected properties, and it's, it's not done well, not integrated. Along the North Royalton line, you drive, was it Boston Road? You don't know you're in two different towns. It blends together nicely.
Yeah.
But I, you know, it'd be nice to have some representation on this, especially around the Hinkley reservation. I mean, does that reservation continue into Granger and the surrounding towns, and what's there, and how you, you know, preserve the nature of that area? Or maybe, maybe there should be some discussions with some of the other towns with their doing.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think during that 2015 process, that was, I think you can see where some of that influence of what's going on kind of outside the borders of Hinkley is there. I think that's part of the, personally, I feel that's a large part of the reason why that area in red is, was identified, right, in terms of future commercial or industrial spaces along the West 130th corridor, because it's responding to the other, you know, Brunswick Hills and City of Brunswick in terms of development that's going on over there, and partly when you see at the corner of West 130th and Boston, right, in response to what's going on in the areas around it. So I don't disagree that, you know, if we are to reexamine this, the future land use map, that understanding what's going on outside the border of Hinkley Township, especially as we look at those border properties, has to come into play.
Paul O'Neill, the other thing is, there's a lot of developments that have gone in since the 2015 plan, like, what is it, Canterbury Farm, that are right up against some of those red areas. So I'm sure they're going to be very interested to see what's going to be allowed in those red areas.
No, absolutely. And I think that goes back to the question of, you know, what are the, what are the development standards that are part of it, right, and requirements that they may have for buffering based on the zoning? So that goes back to the discussion we had last time about this future land use, this future land use map and how it relates and speaks to the zoning code map, because obviously the zoning code is regulating those standards. So it's important for those two things to, to be speaking to one another in order to make sure that those types of situations, there are standards that kind of help buffer those two conflicting land uses and zoning districts. there are standards that kind of help buffer those two conflicting land uses and zoning districts.
Paul Eastlake, I think what Paul is trying to get at is, couldn't, this may not be for you, but maybe for the trustees, couldn't we get a 2022 land use map done? Is that something that we could get that shows where the new developments have gone in? Any new industrial things have gone in? It could possibly include the surrounding areas along 130th and probably not Boston. It's probably not necessary. It's all developed. But but it's just in the surrounding areas so we could see, again, as Paul pointed out, what's left? What's left that could be developed? And so we can see what we would want as a community to impose on any developers that come in.
That's a, Paul O'Neil, that's a very good point. But I I think maybe you should just do the existing condition for everything. Like, for instance, on the 130th corridor, and then you have Canterbury, right between what you're delineating is red, and then those new subdivisions, the former Dusek Farm, there is a high tension lines, overhead transmission lines, which nobody's ever going to build under that, but it's not represented here. And that, that kind of gives you a little bit of a buffer. Okay, so that, you know, just to understand.
I'm going to pass this around. This is 2015's maps with the undevelopables. And Wakefield Run is in here as well as Walden Pond. The only thing that's changed since 2015 would be Redwood. So you guys can pass that down and go through there. And maybe that will answer some of your questions.
The entire Pine Hill's golf course, they're putting in houses.
I'm sorry, I don't know who you are. I'm sorry.
Dave Yasco.
What did you say? I didn't hear you.
Pine Hill's golf course. There's one other.
Paul O'Neil, the other thing I think should be addressed is stormwater. The more development you put in, the more stormwater is going to 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 manage. I remember in 2015, I guess, when this was put out, I remember, was it Dick Goddard was almost drowned in his car on the, on Weymouth Road where I live. I-71. And Hinkley is, has a unique geography to the area. I mean, there's a lot of ravines and a lot of interesting features. If you, now, by trade, I'm an engineer, but I'm a farmer now, okay? And I understand a little bit of both. If you're an engineer, you can engineer anything, okay? And as but as property value goes up, people are going to figure out a way to, you know, do walkout basements right into the ravine. Do we want to be preserving some of that rather than engineering it out? And how does that affect people down the road? Are they going to get flooded out? Are their septic's going to stop working? So I don't see a topo here at all.
No, this is just, Paul, this is just looking at, this is just pulling from our discussion last time. So this is not to get, I apologize if maybe I was misunderstanding where you were headed. It, this was not to kind of go through kind of all the analysis pieces from from the 2015 plan. It was just surrounding the conversation about development, preservation, conservation, and just highlighting on that future land use map that, as we were all talking about, you know, areas to to develop and new development zones, that based on the future land use map, you know, again, specific about that, those areas in red is where we were talking about, you know, from the future land use map where they would go, right? That, that, that's where they would, that's where they would be placed versus somewhere else in in the township.
Well, you're delineating where conservation areas are going to be.
Could be, could be based on this, yeah.
I don't know what your criteria of doing that.
Oh, understood. I I understand you now, Paul. Sorry. Yes. Yeah.
There should be some consideration of the geography
Yes.
of Hinkley, where you base those conservation areas. Otherwise, developers are going to rip it apart.
Correct. Correct. No, no, understood. And so those areas were developed based on looking at the topography, looking at the environmental sensitive areas. So those maps that trustee Augustine was was passing around starts to show kind of that lead up to how the future land use map was developed based on that information. Now, to your, really, really, sorry, Maria, really, really quick to your point, though, you know, there are things that have that have changed, right? So that, that's why part of this discussion that that we're having with this audit is, you know, do do we need to reexamine the comprehensive plan fully? You know, maybe the answer is is yes. And we and we go through the kind of that full comprehensive plan process with the public engagement, the reexamination of of the of the land use map, so on and so forth, right? Everything that kind of falls in line with that. But maybe the answer is, you know, no, the comprehensive plan as a whole doesn't need to be changed right now. But maybe, to your point, maybe we need to better understand what the existing land use is now to potentially look at maybe just the future land use map, right? To better align it with what what the residents of Hinkley Township want to be now and in the future, right? So that could be an option as part of this.
Paul O'Neil, there was one other thing I thought of. And you, you talked about preservation, we started to touch on that. I mean, I'm I'm going down 130th Street where the caddy shack is. I see him stripping out the topsoil already. And I've mentioned that at the last meeting. And I don't know if that's a zoning thing or if it's an ordinance that you pass.
There's no ordinances because for our township, we don't have ordinance.
You can't do ordinances. So I don't know how you address that in a township. But I, the reason why it's very important for this, the the town of Hinkley is mostly septic for wastewater. And in order to have a viable septic system without going through crazy extremes, it's all about your topsoil. And a lot of these homes have been here 20, 40, 60 years. And your topsoil gets exhausted after about 20 years. Then you have to go to a reserve area. And then after that, you really don't, you have to replace your topsoil. And if all these developers are taking the topsoil and stripping it out and sending it away, a lot of the people in the town here are going to have to truck in topsoil to repair their septic systems. You have issues like septic system issues in other parts of Medina County that are pretty serious right now. I think it's starting to happen a little bit here in Hinkley. I know one of my neighbors had to do a a sprinkler type septic system where you're taking the wastewater and you're going at night, you're spraying it out at night. And I think it's disgusting, but it's allowed. That's because he doesn't have the topsoil.
Right.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
Actually, I was going to, to one of Paul's points, I, I wanted to just, it's even more of a clarification so that when we look again to the future, we're not hearing another five years because, you know, another drug mark comes in and the people in development right next to it, so I would never bought my house knowing. When a developer does develop and they're up against these areas that we have, you know, that may or may not be zoned yet, because I know our zoning map doesn't quite match up with the, you know, future land use map. But are they told what, you know, is it just up to them to find out what's next word to them? Or are they told, hey, you know, your development is right up here against a potential commercial thing? You know, I know when we bought ours, we bought a used house, things were around it. You know, you know what it is. I knew what everyone's lot size were. I don't know how it works in a development.
But I I can speak to, like, you know, kind of the the commonplace is, is all of that's kind of, all of that should be examined by who's looking at the property, right? Understanding, you know, what the current zoning is. I know I mentioned before that we work in other municipalities as, as, you know, assisting with zoning and planning and what have you. And so there's often times when we're doing work for those other municipalities that, you know, I'm receiving phone calls asking that exact question. You know, what is, what, we're looking at this particular parcel. What's the zoning for that parcel? What are, what are the regulations? You know, what, what do we have to follow? What's going on around it? And and not to speak for the township, but I'm sure that those phone calls are are had and that those discussions are made in terms of, here's what the existing zoning is. This is what the surrounding zoning. If it is a commercial, commercially zoned property next to a residential and there's a buffer zone requirement, that discussion is is mentioned. So the the answer is yes, the due diligence should be, should be made kind of prior to any kind of transaction is officially made to understand what are the regulations? What are some of the things that they have to abide by or or, you know, don't have to do in that particular situation? Yeah.
The zoning inspector does that.
Richard Pearl, Arthur, can you back up one screen? There's a green line with arrows on it running down the middle and there's a green line
Just off here. Yes.
We're talking about stormwater and we're talking about septic. Can you address those green lines, which I think are called greenways?
Yes. So the idea there from the 2015 plan was looking, again, at area, looking for these areas to be preserved, but kind of looking for them as opportunities for kind of from an ecological standpoint to kind of help with the waters and streams within within the township. And it can also act as, we've seen in other communities too, kind of a a nature trail in some ways to connect various parts of, you know, from that, from the Hinkley Reservation north to the to the residents as you get further up to to Boston Road. And then you see that also here on on the the western border. So that's what was identified in the 2015 plan and we're just still showing it there.
Richard Pearl, on the western border, that's all private land. How, and there's no stream. What does that arrow there mean?
The, the, same thing, the idea of of the of the trail, of kind of the natural trail connection. Not over people's properties, but to look at it in terms of a future connection. So it's not saying that it has to be there and it's a very general line, just like the future land use map in some respects. It's a very general line and idea of where development is. As we talked about before, some of this land is not even zoned that way. So it's to show an intention, whether or not that that line is that direct path is 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 up for further discussion and further investigation. But it's the more to show the intention of of some type of connection between the two parts of the reservation over there.
Okay, thank you. What is the the arrow on the top? What does that connect to in the other town? Does it connect to anything?
It's connecting as part of the overall Cleveland Metro. As part of the overall Cleveland Metro Park system, just starting to create connections across all the municipalities to what the metro parks is, not to, not to speak for them. But, you know, the ultimate goal in terms of trail connection for the metro parks is to, you know, all roads leading to the towpath trail for them. So it's, it's looking at ways to just connect residents from their homes to to the towpath trail. Again, not speaking for them, but I know a desire of theirs is that, you know, individuals can, you know, go from their front steps and and kind of make their way to to those trails without having to necessarily go to like a trailhead, you know, go over and park at a specific parcel and take their bike and and move their way up. But it's a slow moving, that, that's a very slow moving process. And Richard, as you pointed out, it it takes coordination and and discussions about where those, where that route is, you know, where there's available land, if it's private land, having having discussions. So again, it's more of a, an intention to show direction and connection, not to say it's this specific route.
Richard Pearl, to address Paul's question, when that green line goes up there, up to the middle and at the end of the border, there, that green line is basically the east branch of the Rocky River. And right at the very top, that's where the east branch and the west branch come together. That's the end of the east branch.
Paul O'Neil, so I guess, is that a desirable feature for the town? And if it is, how's it going to happen? And there's, there's a lot of private owners on those very expensive houses. How do you, how do you incentivize? I mean, I don't think the town's just going to go and take
No.
take an easement from.
No, it it takes, I, to, to kind of channel a a good friend and colleague of mine who works with an organization who who works to kind of put these trail projects together. It takes a lot of time and a lot of door knocking and just a lot of conversation with those residents to to talk about, you know, the opportunity, to talk about the connection and and to see if it works. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. And if it does, it, great.
Arthur Gilwolding.
Yeah.
Paul talked about Boston Road and the marriage between North Walton and Hinkley at that point that looks good. When you come down 130th.
To me, it does. I mean, I don't know. We're going to get opinions here at some point.
Right. But I mean, it's a, it's a good marriage. It's residential on both sides, so it's a lot easier. When you come down 130th, we now have the the issue with Brunswick and you've got industrial and commercial on the west side. Is there a marriage between the townships or the towns when one is going to make a change? Because if you look at 130th, you go up to Babcock, and on the west side, it's all industrial. And then you come south of Laurel and it's residential. But on the future use, it's got potential commercial on the Hinkley side. Okay, when does, who moves first? Okay, I mean, what, when does that discussion take place? Because we could create something that forces the township across the street. Brunswick could force Hinkley. When does that conversation happen?
No, that's, that's a good, that's a good question. And even though I'm very, 16 years with with my wife, as she would tell you, communication is key. And I've only learned for 16 years. I'm sure there's others here who who've learned longer and better than I have. But communication is really where it's at. So when that happens, it, it, again, I wasn't intimately involved in the process in 2015. But the conversation could have started back in 2015 as Hinkley, Hinkley Township was looking at their land use, understanding what City of Brunswick is planning or wants to do with their side of things. Because there should be that synergy as you're talking about, you know, we look at Boston Road and what's going on there, right, in terms of the residential. So it's really communication and it's, it's one kind of, you know, maybe in this case, it it is Hinkley Township, you know, beginning that conversation with with city officials and and starting it to say, you know, this is what we're thinking. And we're kind of reacting based on what we see you you doing on your side of things and and asking the question, well, what are you doing on your side of things? Now, you can look at their zoning map. You could look at their future land use map of what they have and you can start to understand what their intentions are, right? Even before you kind of start that dialogue. But it it really comes down to your point, starting that dialogue and having the conversation to understand kind of what the intentions are for both municipalities, right?
I would like to think that dialogue has already started. I would hate to think we're sitting here inventing it. Right? I mean, who's got the, who's got the Brunswick future land use map? Trustees, who has that?
They don't have that.
Pardon me?
I do not have that.
Anything else over there?
Oh, you should talk to the, Paul O'Neil. You should talk to the Fullers and see what they're playing on.
I agree, the Fullers own it.
Yeah.
Has designs on it, I would think.
And and to to respond, I know that the city, I know that the city of Brunswick was, I I was given our survey and everything. I think it was 2018, 2019, they went through a comprehensive plan update themselves. And I would, I would hope that even if they didn't have conversations with the trustees at that time, because I don't know if the trustees who are here today were the trustees at that time when the plan was going through. But I would hope that they would have looked at, you know, the future land use map that we're looking at here, right? Because this was what was adopted moving forward at at the time to look at what the city may want to do.
If I could, Dave Manley, there have been discussions. Brunswick, Anderson, and I'm going back a few years, not a lot, but a few. They want a joint economic development area. They're willing to talk. And I don't know if you're familiar with those. And there's just no advantage to to Hinkley. They get the tax money and and we would get whatever's left after all the expenses of running this thing. And if you can see what's happening down in Montpel, the same thing is going to happen here. The taxes being collected or just eating this this animal that's been collected. And things, so they, I think their attitude would have to change. Now, maybe it has, but I can tell you, there had been unofficial discussions at different times, but it's always going to back to the same thing.
Dave, is that Brunswick City or Brunswick Township?
Well, Brunswick Township is way down at the end there, 130th. Brunswick City is where the discussions have been held with. At one time, the idea was, of course, to try, they would do sewer and water and a few other things, but that's kind of gone by the way over the years. And to the best of my knowledge, the last discussions where they were adamant that joint economic development was, they would be interested in on the 130th corridor from at least Center Road South, maybe a little further north even.
And you're talking about Brunswick City?
City, yes.
Okay, because I believe the Fuller property is Brunswick Township.
Yeah, and that's, there are some developments that they've talked about down there for housing way back up against 71.
I, I don't know.
And that corridor is key, Mr. Manley, because if we look at the maps that are going around, that's the annexation corridor, which is why it wouldn't really benefit Hinkley. which is why it wouldn't really benefit Hinkley.
I do remember those conversations with the joint economic development and no matter how you looked at it, it was like an old Brunswick win on it, but they just start losing parts of the township.
There was absolutely, in my opinion, and I just saw pieces of it, there was absolutely no economic advantage to Hinkley other than our businesses would pay.
So what happened, Paul O'Neill, so what happened? Is Brunswick invented something and then they're pushing it on Hinkley?
No, there's a thing called joint economic development where communities can get together and they create a tax base and some tax incentives and basically it revolves around income tax. That the people and businesses that fall within that pay income tax.
I would think that Brunswick Township is a township, Hinkley's a township.
Well, that's the township down there.
He's referring to the city of Brunswick.
I'm thinking south of Center Road, it's mostly Brunswick Township.
South of Laurel.
South of Laurel, okay, so it's south of Laurel. It'd be an equal entity proposing something.
No, I don't know of anything that that ever happened. I'm just, I'm talking about north of Laurel Road.
But I'm thinking, okay, so what happens from the Brunswick Township side? Do they invent something and then it's gonna affect us? Or like we're saying, are we just sitting in a room inventing something? And or do we talk to each other or is it not worth talking to Brunswick Township?
I can't answer that, I mean, I don't know of anything, I don't know anything about. All I know is the pieces that I was privy to, that Brunswick City would discuss the joint economic development plan from Center Road South to Laurel. And they were talking about the maybe going further north to get Aldi and a few of those other things along their side into it. But nothing came of it because as you pointed out again, there was no advantage to the township of Hinkley. As far as an arrangement with Hinkley, with Brunswick Township, I don't see any advantage to either one of them. The whole thing about a judge is you create, it's a tax thing, you're able to generate income tax. And I just don't see either community saying, hey, I think I like that idea, let's pay more tax.
Income tax from people that work there?
Work there or if they live there, they wouldn't be paying income tax if they lived there, but I bet they might. But the idea is you're trying to get businesses involved and they pay income tax on their profits, as income tax, corporate tax and what have you. But you'd also get the income tax from those workers who in many cases they live in Brunswick and already pay in tax.
Brunswick City.
Or Brunswick City, or might live in Hinkley and would be paying tax for their income, even though a few hundred yards away, they wouldn't.
Right.
But the big problem, I think, and we've all seen it, and a couple of many people, not we, some people have seen it, is that generally these things work to the benefit of the committee or the economic development situation they created. It becomes, you know, you're gonna have a council of sorts and they're spending money and that's where the money goes. It doesn't particularly benefit anybody unless you get lucky and get a Ford or a company or some big company involved. It's just no advantage.
Paul O'Neill, so right now, I think with the Caddyshack being developed, I don't know if there's anything else north of Laurel that's up for development, there might be one vacant property?
There's some other properties.
Just south of Quebec.
Okay, but I think the, you know, if the town doesn't have a plan for south of Laurel and how that's going to generate income for the town, I think it's an opportunity lost. And I think you're on equal footing against Brunswick Township as far as you're not having to have all the income go to a foreign town or a foreign, yeah, foreign town, because Brunswick Township's a town.
I have the Brunswick Hills zoning map in front of me.
Do you want me to stop sharing so you can put it up?
I stopped sharing you.
Yes, I'll stop sharing.
Yeah, what's it told us?
I will show you in one second, I'm being practical too, so bear with me.
You guys have a plan.
Not see it.
There we are.
Okay, so this is Center Road, right here.
Yeah, I see it, yeah.
And this is West 130th, right here.
The diagonal at the bottom corner, that's Weymouth Road?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
So it looks to me like this is residential. Residential, and this is a commercial section here at the bottom of their boundary, what their zoning map reads.
And it'd be interesting to let, Paul O'Neill, be interested to lay that next to ours.
So I'll tell you that.
Are you dancing now?
Yeah.
Is it too soon?
It's too soon. So we're, he's Laurel. So we, on the future land use, on the future land use map, not the zoning map, it's calling for a future commercial industrial along this portion and then along that portion. So it's matching up there, but it's not necessarily matching up with Laurel on the future land use map, not the zoning. Because again, the zoning and the future land use map aren't singing with one another.
We can say at the intersection of Laurel.
I'm sorry, you guys spelt your name.
Angela Chesnut, at the intersection of West 130th and Laurel, you would have industry, like a business use?
That's what the future land use map is suggesting. It's not saying that it is right now, because the zoning does not allow for that right now. It's only the future land use map that's saying that.
Is that an R1 currently?
I believe it's an R1, it should be an R1 currently.
Jim Byaloski, so that's an R1 now, so it's zone residential?
It's zone residential right now.
And it just doesn't match up?
Yes.
So it doesn't mean that?
Doesn't mean, right, correct. Because the zoning, it does not map it right now. So that's where, we're kind of, right now, we're speaking kind of three different languages, right? The one language is what's going around with the towns around us. The other language is what's currently on the books in terms of zoning, what is allowed by code, right? Right now for the township. And then the third one is talking about the future land use map. What is, what the hope and future is, was at that time discussing potential for some type of commercial, commercial industrial in that, in that area. Now, what was that in response to? Conversation, it could be this discussion of, you know, we're already talking about commercial or industrial zone properties, because it is zoned. It's zoned industrial, I think I2 or I1, just south of Center. Going along West 130th right now is the current zoning. So the thinking, again, I'm speculating here, I'm trying to get another people's minds from 2015 and I can't even get in my own mind in 2022, but, you know, the thought could have been, you know, kind of extending it down that corridor. But, you know, Paul, back to your point, as we're, you know, as we're thinking about this audit and thinking about, you know, what are the appropriate next steps and what we want to do? You know, maybe this plays into thinking about reexamining the future land use map for reasons of what's going on, not only with the existing zoning of the townships and municipalities around, but just where the current trends are too with respect to development.
So that question could be posed as part of the survey to keep things moving.
Yeah, yeah.
That could be posed as part of the survey, we're focusing on one issue, but there's a lot of other elements.
Yeah, and one of the questions that, and we can talk about it when we get to the survey part here in a second. You know, one of the questions that we had proposed that we had heard from, I think, steering committee members as well as some of the public was, you know, do we, do we just, the question should be, do we just update the comprehensive plan? Do we go through that overall process of updating it, right? I think that was one of the questions early on and the discussion was, well, we really don't know what the big issues are, right? And how we need to address it. So I think the hope for, if I can move forward, the idea behind this survey is to start getting closer to understand what are the, what are the real crux issues and how can we address, how can we address them? Because each one of these issues could be addressed in a different manner, right? It could be that we hear loud and clear from individuals that, you know what, things have really changed, right? Maybe changed more than what we initially thought when we started this process or this process, this audit was thought of. And maybe we do need to go through a more robust community engagement process, discussion, sitting around the table like we are right now with a map and a couple of markers and starting to circle things together. I don't know about you, that's fun for me, but this is what I do for a living. It may not be fun for everybody, but maybe that's something that needs to happen again and really redevelop the comprehensive plan earlier than, you know, typically what comprehensive plans get developed. Usually, I think we were talking anywhere from 10 to 20 years is usually the kind of the lifespan of a comprehensive plan. And it being adopted in 2015, we reached the 10-year mark in 2025, right? But again, maybe things have changed. Maybe it's, you know, things are okay, but we need to start talking about zoning regulations and we need to start talking about design standards. So maybe it's a reexamination of the zoning code that needs to happen or development of design standards that can supplement both the comprehensive plan and the zoning code, right? So I think these are all, these are still the questions that are out there that I think all of us here, we're discussing this as a group, we're discussing it as a committee and with this community survey, trying to get additional information from the public to kind of help you all understand what that final recommendation could be.
Tom Trader, I think it's important for you to remember that this is an audit process and not a rewrite.
Correct.
Right, I think we're, it sounds like we're kind of going in a rabbit hole on a lot of stuff that is really directing us to a complete rewrite. And I don't know that that's what we're, first of all, we're not charged with that as a committee, right? And secondly, we don't know that we want to yet or that the community at large wants us to. So I don't know, it's interesting to talk about zoning regulations and all those things, but that is outside of our.
Yeah, and I think though, having these discussions are good because it's starting to kind of help, I think, all of us kind of shed some light on what some of the potential issues are, right? And to help us understand, you know, what that recommendation is at the end of the day, right? And I do, I think this survey is meant to, is gonna be meant to help for us as a staff, as OHM, to understand maybe some of the things that can be done. And I think to help you all as a steering committee understand from the community's perspective, you know, what are, what's important and what's not important to move forward. So with that, I think that's good, kind of good segue to talk about the survey. So this is what we're here for tonight. So, you know, I guess, Tom, to build on your point, why are we doing this, right? It's to understand how applicable the comprehensive plan is and what are the specific issues of it today so that we can understand what type of recommendation we want to make, what's the course of action that we want to have. These results that we get from the survey are gonna help you all as a steering committee and it's gonna help us as a consultant in providing that recommendation, how do we proceed? Is it, yep, it sounds like we need to go through, we need to update the comprehensive plan full blown, right? Or, you know what, no, we need to look at, you know, elements 1, 2 of the comprehensive plan or the zoning code or what have you. So it's to help, it's to help all of us understand that. So in terms of format and delivery, and I know that the trustees were talking about this at their last, the last meeting? Second, not the last meeting here, but last trustees' meeting, your last trustees' meeting, but you were talking about it.
Yes, we talked about the survey going out based on your recommendation, every house to ensure that every single person in Hinkley Township has the same advantage to participate.
Exactly, so we felt that doing a printed copy was straightforward, it offered that equal opportunity. It offered participation from all residents. The trustees had looked into, you know, costs for, looking to do this for two pages double sided. It allows that each survey can be numbered and tracked to ensure that we have fair results. The surveys can either be returned by mail or can be dropped off here at the township offices. During the survey window, we would come and pick them up periodically so that we can start working on tabulating the results altogether. In terms of the timing, our recommendation, and this goes back to, I think we were, I was having a discussion earlier about postponing our April meeting to give additional time, not only to finalize the survey, but also to advertise for the survey and we'll talk about that here in a second. I think a couple of you all on the steering committee gave suggestions about how we can get the word out that the survey is out there. I think we've had great response so far in terms of participation from the public beyond the steering committee members. But like we were talking about tonight and last meeting, we really want to make sure that individuals know about this and respond to this survey. So the idea behind it would be roughly four weeks. The idea here is that there would really be kind of like a three-week period that that survey would be out there for people to respond and to submit back. And what we usually like to do is kind of give that week of notifying people, getting it out in the mail, right? So it's kind of in-between time, so we count it, but we don't count it. But we feel like that three-week period for the survey to be out there is a good, fair period, it's not too long. Some people will say, oh, let's, you know, let's put it out for longer and people forget. I mean, I got things on my like to-do list that just go like this, right? And mail that just kind of piles up. So if we put it in a reasonable amount of time for individuals to receive the survey and make sure they've received it, have time to consider the questions and to, you know, respond to them thoughtfully and purposefully. And then obviously have time to get that survey back to us, either by mail or by dropping it off at the township offices. We talked about how we get the word out. So I think, as mentioned before, that the township has an email kind of newsletter that can go out that we can attach it to. I know we have members of the media here that we can put an ad in to let people know that it's being mailed out and that they should receive it. We can, again, create kind of a flyer that can go up on social media that, you know, you all here on the steering committee can help spread the word through community organizations like HOAs or other groups that are here within the community, the trustees, residents, everyone who's been a part of this process to this date, helping to spread it by word of mouth. I will say that the word of mouth method is really the tried and true. In any process that we do, it doesn't matter sometimes how much social media postings we put up there, how many emails you receive, no offense to our media members, how many postings are in the newspaper, in this case, the Gazette. Oftentimes, if someone's talking about and says, hey, you should have received this, you know, you should take it, you should respond to it and submit it in, that's usually, that's usually the most effective way to do that. Yeah, please, please.
Was the digital version of this survey considered?
Yes, a digital survey was considered, but there was, there was thoughts that there could be ways that individuals may not be able to take, you know, thinking more of those who aren't tech savvy, right? That they would be able to take it. And then if we had two different versions, oftentimes it gets confusing of people taking it twice. Like they get the copy survey, they take that, they submit it, and then they see the digital copy and they take that and submit it. And even though there'll be things that we can put on there in terms of, you know, what's your zip code or what's your address to kind of filter through, the mailing and the willingness of the trustees to do that is the most straightforward way to say, getting it to every household and to every resident in the township.
I agree, getting the paper copy out to everybody, but having a digital version to be able to submit that is going to increase the number of respondents you're going to get dramatically. I don't know if you found that in the surveys that you do, but in the survey research that I've done, always digital exceeds that. And there are ways to, you know, use the same tracking numbers to get that submitted, even if it's able to be submitted via email. I know a lot of people don't use, you know, won't go out to the mailbox, won't go through the process of filling it out, putting it in an envelope, putting a stamp on it, dropping it off. That's beyond, you know, their ability to, not ability, but their desire to get that turned in. And so, I don't know, is there, what does the rest of the committee think about having a digital version alongside that?
Just before you start that conversation, there is a prepaid stamped envelope in with the survey. So it's very simple for them to send back and it will be designated on the outside of the envelope when they get it, township survey enclosed, so people are aware of what is in there.
Just, you did a, we did a paper survey previously, right, in 2015?
I don't know how it was done.
I think, I think the 2015 one, I don't have a plan, I think it was done, it was like, it might have been a combination, but it might have been more digital. Actually, I actually want to say it was a paper version, I want to say it was a paper version. I think.
Seven years ago that there was a.
Yeah. And just quickly, Paul, into the rest of the community, I mean, I feel that the mailed version is the most direct way. But again, I look to all of you, I mean, you know the residents here better than I do. So again, our biggest concern, and I agree, I mean, we've done a lot of research and we've done surveys, you know, different ways, right? And it's really tailored down. We do feel though, that at the end of the day, most times that the mailed survey is the most direct way to get them the information. I do, I do understand that it does become a little bit more complicated because you have to physically fill it out and mail it back, you gotta drop it in the mail. As you say that now, I realize that I have a letter that I was supposed to mail like two days ago from my wife that I need to go do. So I'll go do that. So I understand that perspective, but it's also, sometimes with the digital surveys, the one thing we do see is that even though it's out there and there's QR codes and folks will still ignore it just as much as getting it. as much as, as getting it direct. And then sometimes there's that digital divide, that that lack of understanding of how to, you know, go on the computer and do that, just, just adds to the, to the complications with it.
Paul O'Neill, I, I agree with you. I, I think younger people, I don't even think they know what a post office is. And digital is very convenient. I think you're right that you probably get more response, but you're gonna, it's probably gonna skew who you're gonna get the response from.
Well, how's that going to skew it? I mean, there's still, Paul, you're still residents in the community. It's just how you're going to get people to respond.
Because then they can run, they can run copies of them and send them in. You can get multiple per household. It, it could skew the numbers.
Okay, now, on the other side.
Fraud, that's different. You know, some of them committing fraud.
Well, it's not really fraud, but people will run copies of it, I'm sure. That's how they're, they're gonna be numbered.
On the other side, if you don't do it digitally, then you're gonna skew it to everybody who has gray hair. Okay? And so I think, to be fair, I think you have to do both and have a, a way that you authenticate the survey, whether it's digital or mailing.
Terry, go ahead.
Terry Walrath, as I understand it, your proposal is that these responses would not be anonymous. Is that correct?
We're not asking for anyone's name in the survey. We do, and we'll share, we do ask where, we can ask address, was one of the suggestions. How long?
Why not? Why not the person's name?
To, to be perfectly honest with you, Paul, to me, as we're reviewing the results, name's great, sure, to help, if, if it's to help authenticate for, for the township purposes, I, I wouldn't have any objections. But for us, in terms of the results, we're, we're wanting to just make sure that we're getting results from township residents. So as long as we know that we're getting them from members of the community, we, those are the results that we want to look at. So the, the name is, is, I guess, irrelevant for us as we're analyzing. As long as they're residents.
Terry Walrath, lack of anonymity will of course do two things. Number one, it will discourage some people from turning in a survey at all, if they think it's not going to be anonymous. And number two, it will discourage people from being candid, if they don't think it's going to be anonymous. Just to show of hands here, how many people in this room, if they got a survey and it said, don't turn in multiple surveys, how many people would turn in more than one survey? Would anybody turn in more than one?
Well, I don't think anybody here is going to admit that.
Well, all right. I mean, I think.
I see this is the whole anonymity thing.
Yeah.
This is a shining example.
I think we're a representative body, at least we're supposed to be. I trust my fellow Hinkleyites to do the right thing.
Someone in the back has a question.
Sean Pera. My question would be.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Sean Pera, how would we know that someone, like if it's electronic? My only question would be, you know, somebody that maybe lives in Brunswick, but has a business in Hinkley, or vice versa, has a business in Hinkley, lives in Brunswick, wouldn't be able to do that survey?
I believe part of it, and not, Sean, sorry for jumping in, they're gonna put a number on the ones that are mailed out. So the email would also have to be the course, if someone, and I gotta think my way through this, but.
You got number 31, so you would put that on your electronic.
My understanding, that would be the only way to do it. Because yes, there is, as much as we trust people, and I do think you will see duplicates. If somebody's very strong on a certain point on the survey, it may encourage more than one result.
And then what happens if you get two number 31s? We're gonna get that information.
We're not gonna use that at all.
Yeah.
Is it going to be one survey per household in the fact that, so my husband and I have to agree?
That was my question, so thank you.
When she's right, she's right. And when she's wrong, she's right.
That was actually my question, one of my questions too, because you said to ensure every resident, but then you're saying one per household. And that's two different things, you know?
That's my question.
And that's what the difficulty you're gonna run into is at what point do you, is it two, is it 18 and over? Is, that's where we're gonna have to rely on your expertise, because that's something that everybody's gonna give a different opinion.
Yep.
Last, Sean Pera, I get to vote for president, he gets to vote for president. That's my feeling. We can both have our, our sayings. We might not agree on something. Just like, you know, House divided, right? So is there a way to tell who, you know, registered people in household? I don't know that answer. So that's my question.
Go ahead, Terry.
Terry Walrath, along with that, if you send out one per household, and that's all you send out is one per household, they'll have to decide who's gonna answer it, number one. But also, number two, if you're only sending out one per household, how is somebody gonna vote multiple times? Are they gonna steal them from their neighbors? Or how are they gonna get hold of the, the other surveys?
Paul O'Neill, I'll tell you how. I own four houses in the town. So do I get to vote four times? I have four houses.
Yeah, but do you, do you live in all of them?
Yeah.
Not consecutively.
Maria, I know you had a question. Maria and then Terry.
Also, but some of it came through with everyone else's with the digital, you know, with it. Because I think there are ways to correlate, like you point out, you can have a digital and a written, because yes, you risk alienating those who aren't as tech savvy, or who may not have the easy internet access and stuff by doing it only digitally. And you risk alienating those younger people who really don't look at paper and don't do the post office, you know? I'm somewhere in the middle. I can easily ignore an e-survey that I get from my societies just as easily as I can ignore paper, you know? But I, I think you have two ends. And one other thing is, is there an availability for those with all the little mice? Like I use, you know, the scanner apps on my phone to take the survey written. Now, I don't want to go to the post office, but I can scan it even just with the camera on my phone and email it to the township. I don't know if we want to go to something like that, you know? It might be an in-betweener.
Jacob.
I would speak as a trustee. When we had the applications for all of you come in, we had multiple people say, Mr. and Mrs. And that was our situation with the third person that we chose to add on to this committee. It was Mr. and Mrs. Lishner. Who's gonna be the committee member? Whose information am I reading on the application? Is it Mr. or Mrs.? Or do they have the same viewpoint? So that's the first part. Second part is, I do not want to see, receive one email survey at all. Because then I have to make copies of every one of my emails for records requests, which will take me days. So it's better to go through Arthur or to have it mailed in. The hard copy that we get that's mailed in is the record. If we have an electronic version, we have to somehow find a way to track it so that it can be part of a public record. Because there will be people that will call and say, well, I want to know how many people did the electronic, and what are all their responses to A, B, C, D, and E?
Sure.
And additionally, pretty apparent, we don't have the email ad, address for every resident, correct? How to resolve that? You can't, can't resolve that.
Question.
Got two minutes.
I'm John K. List. I guess, for the idea about the mail, the same mailbox that'll receive it, if you go out in that same mailbox, it works, right? It don't happen to where the post office.
Then you're relying on the post office.
You have one more? State your name.
You got to state your name, so I know who you are.
David Terry, what are you doing? You have more than two adults in the house live there. How are you gonna handle that? I like your idea of the numbers.
So I don't think there's an easy answer.
Well, and the question I had too, Paul Esterling, was what are we considering residents? If you own a business in Hinkley, are you getting a survey? It's only two residential?
Just residential. And what we could potentially do, because they're numbered, is we could say we allow for two of every number. That would allow spouses to equally vote.
What if you rent?
Probably wouldn't get one.
Which though?
Property owner will get it.
It's for owners, not renters.
Well, if, if you're renting, you probably won't get one, unless the home's in your name.
The list, I'm assuming was correctly wrong. The post office has the mail, has everybody's address, and that's the list that you use to mail things out.
Kathy Lozey. I.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Kathy Lozey. I happen to be the sole owner of my property. If you send out two, I can respond twice.
That's what you run up against. That's why I, you know, when, when we first talked about this last year, we, we kind of wanted to mimic the model that trustee Kalina at that time had used in Medina Township, which was one per household.
One per household.
What's a household?
Well, and that's just it.
That's a great answer.
So I get four? Or eight?
You get four.
There's a couple of questions in the back. Go ahead.
Heidi Huthine, we have a 26-year-old son who's still living at home, and he is hoping to live in Hinkley one day. Based on what's gonna happen here, doesn't he have a voice? That would be my husband, myself, and my son.
Mr. Colonel.
Who's up there?
Cindy Engelmann. So.
Say that again.
Cindy Engelmann.
Thank you.
So number one, keep it simple. We are not a huge city. We're a township. I just say, mail a survey to every address. And you've got two options here. So you've got the, the number that's associated with an address. You can say at a minimum that you're gonna get one back from each address. And if you have a husband and a wife living in an address, then add your name along with it, so you can validate why you're getting two that are associated, say, with number 31.
Aubrey Brockner, I feel like if this is to try to get social interaction and residents to join in and say things, you guys are the committee, you are to hear everyone's opinion. Getting a survey out, doing one per household is just the easiest thing. It's just simple, not worrying about how many residents are there. But if people need to say things, that's coming to these meetings too. And I feel like that's part of it. That's where you guys can hear us if we're, you know, talking. So I feel like it's a, you know, simple solution, but also another simple solution for people that want their opinion heard. Easy.
Paul O'Neill, I, I think we should hear from the younger people, you know, because they do live here. And I think everybody who lives here should be heard. However, we do that. I think you just have to authenticate, you know, put your name, maybe your date of birth, and where you live.
So Chris Kalina just texted me and said that Sharon Township, and I apologize because I said Medina Township, registered, it was through registered voters. No business owners could participate unless they voted there. Renters could vote as well. Surveys were numbered, no electronic, and they had over a 40% return rate.
Did he say it was, it was to register, it was sent to registered voters?
Registered voters. But the way that our mail system, from our mailhouse that we use for our Kimball opt-out, that's how we're using, that's what we're using for ours, goes through the post office.
Well, that's another, Paul O'Neill, that's another way to do it. Whoever has Kimball gets to do a survey.
You really want this meeting going on for three hours?
Once again, there's no perfect system. You guys can make it what you think is best.
In fact, with yours, I think the good thing is, this is the third meeting. Input's been requested, welcomed online. There's been a lot of discussions. So I, I don't think it's gonna be lack of trying to get everybody's opinions. The goal of the survey is we have to come up with the four pages, the two double-sided, get the questions, get the temperature, what's going on, get people's opinions. And I believe the questions will be made up, some that are definitive, yes, no, maybe circle here, but some will leave room for some explanation. So it's a combination of the two, so that some of the results are actionable. Because if you leave everything as, tell us your opinion on, there's no way to take action on that, because you'll get potentially 8,000 different opinions. You know, if we can get a response rating, we're close to that, based upon the last one that was done in 15, that would be outstanding. Because the response rate was so low then, that the sample size was so small, it wasn't, but nowadays, I think there's a lot more people, just judging by the people here tonight, that care, that have talked about it. So I do think we can get that response rate, and will be good for the future plans.
Andy Brockner, I'm Aubrey's husband. One thing that seems, has not been mentioned yet, is how, once we get this data back, how that's interpreted, and the transparency of that interpretation. So we look back to the 2015, the top five treasure cards. The first one was rural low-density farms, got 37 votes. Number three was openness of landscape. And number five was size of residential lots, large lots. They were classified as three different things. To me, and to many residents, those could all be the same. So we're splitting what might be consensus. Like, we asked everybody, what's your favorite color? 40% of the people say blue. And you say, well, what does blue mean to you? And you get out of Sherman Williams. Well, now we've taken consensus and we've split. So transparency, how you, and you guys interpret this data is as important as how we get. I just want to make sure that's not lost.
No, agreed. Agreed with the transparency of the data. And I think that's why, you know, a lot of the questions, keeping it simple in terms of kind of some yes, no answers. If there are some multiple choice, being very direct with what those options are. Because again, what we're, and, and I think Jim, you had mentioned it, David mentioned it, Tom had mentioned it as well, we're not going to, we're not updating the plan right now, right? What we're trying to do is understand what do we need to do in the future, either with this plan or with some of the other regulations that the township has? What's the right direction that we need to take to, to address these things? So the, the point of the survey, the intention of the survey, is to try to understand what that, what that next step should be, right? Again, going through a full plan update, or, or is it, you know, as simple as making, you know, some minor modifications in certain areas? But to understand what that, what that is. So agreed, agreed on the simplicity in terms of the answers, to, to make sure that it's very clear, one way or the other.
Understanding that the community can see, here was the response.
Correct.
Here was how the committee, the trustees, and you interpreted that response. Because when we've got three things that are split out, when really it could have been 60%, now it's split into three categories, it's totally misrepresenting general opinion of.
Right, right.
I just want to make sure that we all have access to this data and how it was interpreted, once it's all said and done.
Right. No, point well taken, yeah.
I just had a question, actually, for the trustees, the thought of using registered voters per, instead of households, since that seemed to be.
I think that eliminates a pool of people who probably should have a say, and maybe are just not registered to vote. And I don't want to do that.
Hey, Arthur, I just want to clarify.
You gotta say who you are.
Oh, yes. Natasha K. List, 18098 road. I just want to clarify, because I'm kind of new to this process of the township thing. And so the audit process that we're currently in right now is basically just to determine, do we need to make changes, yes or no? And if we do, then it's a whole nother process.
Correct.
The only thing we're doing right now is like, what, what's the next step? And so when you say recommendations, that's not specific recommendations to change in the code or the comprehensive plan. It's specific action steps that would then engage the community again. So we did say, we need to review the comprehensive plan. There's some major discrepancies. The comprehensive plan process would then be reopened, and that would be like a month, like months to a year of like engagement, drafting, and, and community would be, right? If we're not next month going to make changes to the community yet.
No.
Or is there any of that?
That, that's correct. That's correct.
I just wanted to clarify that process, because we're still kind of figuring it out.
No, that's 100% correct. Yeah, we're, we're determining what is that, what, what is that next, in a way, what's that next process? But that process, you know, going, going into some of the details that we're talking about here with the steering committee. But as I mentioned before, I mean, these conversations are, are good, because it's helping us kind of formulate what are the right questions that we need to be asking. right questions that we need to be asking in order to understand what that next step needs to be, what that recommendation is at the end of this. Yeah. No, you're welcome.
Do you want to take a brief break, and then come back and start talking survey questions?
Yeah, let's, no, let's take like, if we can take like five, 10 minutes, and then we'll talk about survey questions and revisit the subject of how we deliver it.
All right, we are unmuted, so we're ready to get back into the survey of things. Arthur, just so the committee knows, I've taken the liberty of giving you the 2015 community survey questions and results, as well as all of the email exchanges that were sent from Arthur, as it pertains to the comprehensive plan, steering committee, and those potential survey questions, so.
So we'll get back to, I do want to go through kind of the discussion about proposed questions, what we've heard, and what we've kind of put together and share that with you. And then obviously, we need to get resolution on how we want to deliver the survey, and make sure that we're all on the same page. So very quickly, we went through, we documented questions that we received. We started documenting kind of general topics. There were some of the emails that you all saw, that I shared with you, that I had received, that just kind of talked about general topics that they wanted to see cover in the, in the community survey. So what, any email that I received, I simply forwarded on to you all for your consideration. It was just kind of a straight swap, so you can see exactly what I saw in terms of conversation, attachments, and what have you. Some were attachments, some were just right in the body of the email. So shared that with you all as I received them. I admittedly, I was away from my computer since about nine o'clock this morning. So if anything was sent today, I did not forward it to you. So I will make sure to do that tomorrow, when I get back to the computer, to share that with you. I just wanted to highlight, kind of in general, the topics that we heard in terms of questions. So again, very overarching, some repeating itself, but, you know, conversations about, questions related to architecture and design standards, kind of the zoning code ordinance and its standards specifically, talking about zoning districts. So not too dissimilar from the code itself, but specifically about districts, infrastructure, housing. I pulled out specifically kind of conservation developments as it relates to residential and housing, sustainability, talks about development, but very specific to town center, open space, safety and security, the conversation around, you know, taxes and levies, general questions about the comprehensive plan, and then the conversation around development, preservation, and conservation. So those were kind of the kind of overarching topics, overarching themes that we heard. And so what we did is, from our perspective, we developed a set of questions that we'll share with you for your consideration and your review. Admittedly, I wanted to get these questions to you in advance of this meeting, but we kind of had a slew of emails, or we received a slew of emails in terms of suggestions. So I wanted to kind of take those into consideration. We wanted to kind of review them before sharing this with you. So that's why you didn't get these questions in advance. And we'll talk about timing here in a minute, so that you all can review these. But based on the questions we received, based on the topics that we saw, and then going back to, again, what is the purpose of the survey? What is the purpose of this audit, right? What are we doing? We kind of came up with questions under these kind of topics and headings. So comprehensive plan, questions just related to specifics of the 2015 comprehensive plan, zoning code, conversation around development, preservation, and conservation, sustainability, housing, and zoning regulations. So those were kind of the categories that we kind of stuck to, that we felt is going to help us and help you as the steering committee determine what is that next step. We update the comprehensive plan, do update elements of the comprehensive plan, is it the zoning code, is it other regulations that we need to do, right, to help get to those answers. So this is just a screenshot, and I'll share the hard copy with all of you, of the first two pages out of four. So, you know, general questions right now, and I think this is where we can have a discussion about this in terms of understanding where folks are. Admittedly, the first question is a standard question, how we use it in terms of identifying within a quadrant, an easy way to do it in terms of a survey form. But as we were talking about earlier, there's other ways in terms of putting in their name, putting in their address, things of that nature that we can put in there to be more specific. Talk about zoning regulations, you know, supporting a review or an update, developing potentially architectural guidelines to set, update standards. Talking specifically, you know, some of the questions in here, we do have a couple of specific questions, and a lot of that is just due to, we've heard this a lot, both in questions we received and the general topics. So in terms of, you know, do we increase minimum lot sizes in R1, for example? The idea around sustainability, this was something that we had talked about in the last meeting, in terms of it was a principle, there were numerous action items around that. And I think that, you know, some elements of the comprehensive plan didn't go into maybe as much detail as maybe it could have or should have in there. So again, this is talking about maybe asking the question, do we dive into a sustainability policy more, kind of examine what that is and what that means for Hinckley Township now and into the future? Then as we talk about housing, you'll see that we kind of give a little intro, a little description of some of these, so it's understood what we're trying to get at. You know, just a general question of, are we supporting additional housing? Do we want to see additional housing? Yes or no? If you answer yes, what are the types of housing that you would like to see? The idea of just simply asking, would you support conservation, development, housing that we've seen so far in the township? Asking if, you know, maybe do we start looking into the design standards associated with that? This comprehensive planning and zoning code section, one of the specific things that we identified last time was the five plan components that were in the comprehensive plan. And in there, you'll see the five plan components and their goal statements that were listed. And again, as our purpose and mission is, if we're trying to understand what is our next step, do we need to update this comprehensive plan? Our team felt that kind of asking the question, does this goal statement, does this plan element, is it still relevant today, can help understand whether, you know, answer that question about updating the comprehensive plan, because these were the five main goal elements. Then on the following page, you know, the last two pages, again, we asked that question of, should we go through a more robust comprehensive plan update? It was a question that was raised here today, yes or no? Again, supporting, you know, keeping the existing comprehensive plan, and future land use map, as you see at the bottom there, and trying to match up the two, the zoning map and the future land use map. Trying to stay away from too many open-ended questions, I think Jim and Maria, you were talking about this in terms of the survey questions. I do feel though, that a couple of them are appropriate, especially when we talk about that term rural, of trying to understand what does that mean for the township. So we have that one in there. Then when we talk about development and preservation and conservation, you know, we talk about wanting to see commercial development in the township. As we were going through that analysis and looking at the future land use map, we identify the areas that, you know, based on that future land use map, not based on the zoning map, based on the future land use map, where for future development could apply, and asking, you know, would you still be supportive of seeing development in those areas as identified? There were a lot of questions that we received specifically about developing the historic town center. There was a lot of specifics with that. And as we were pointing out before, you know, we're kind of diving into that detail, and that's not necessarily where we're at right now, to go in the detail of, you know, do we develop town, you know, how we would develop the historic town center if it's appropriate. So it's asking the question of, do we want to see additional development there? Areas to preserve and conserve land. And then I thought what was a really good question that we'll have to coordinate with the fiscal officer, is, you know, one way that, you know, land can potentially be preserved is maybe putting together a green space levy, and seeing if there's support for that, because in order to purchase that land. So those were the questions that our team put together. Like I said, I have a copy of all of them for you that I'll hand out to you. I'm not expecting any of you to, you know, necessarily react right away. I want to give you all time to kind of review and digest. I also have hard copies of the question pool that was sent to us. So we, again, we took all that, all the emails, all the attachments that were sent to us, and put them together in a question pool. And I can also send both of these in a digital form. And would like all of you to take a look at them, and kind of reflect on them, see if they match up with some of the things that you were thinking about. From our team, we were trying to keep it very straightforward in terms of responses, as yes or no responses. I know they're a little bit definitive, but again, we're not, this process is not meant to go into all the details of how we do it. It's to try to understand what is the direction we need to go, so we can get into more of those details with respect to whatever that next step is. If it's updating the comprehensive plan, if it's updating the zoning code, if it's developing design standards or other elements that would support what we have on the books right now. So that's kind of the, our survey that we put together for you all as the steering committee to review and provide some comments to. Maria?
Yeah, question for you, is the one you had there on the, if you go back to what would be, I guess, the second page, you know, what kind of development do you support, single residential? Then you have the conservation development. Are we going to provide a definition? Because I think the group here is well aware of what these things are. Not everyone is as engaged necessarily in that. And that might sound like, yeah, conserve land, go for it, you know? And we might not be getting answers that really reflect their opinion. And I think we need to, somewhere in the service, say one using, you know, refer to these definitions when you see something.
Yeah, that was something that after we had put this together, you know, we were reviewing as a team and did point that out, and was something that was, because it's in a draft form right now, intentionally left off for you all to kind of review and give your opinion. We felt that, I think, putting a definition next to each of those would be beneficial, something as simple as we can. Again, as we were putting this together, we were putting it together in the mindset that there would be a physical, there would have to be a physical copy. So even as we talk about having the digital copy, we want to make sure that everything we put in the survey can be replicated in a physical copy. So that way, the digital copy is not providing more information or providing more options, right, than the physical one. So we have to make sure that the two are mirrored, exactly alike. But that was one that our team had kind of put a little star next to and say, you know, maybe we wanted to find that a little bit more. But again, wanted to share that with you, because it's always good to have a couple different eyes look at this. Very quickly, too, when we have gone through kind of the survey process and other plans previously, this is typically the process we do. We kind of come up, you know, based on conversation that we have as a group, come up with a set of questions, have the steering committee members, you all, review those questions, confirm whether or not you're in agreement with it, come to a consensus, and then, you know, make any edits or changes as a group decides together, and then put that out there.
Could you blow it up?
I can on here, but I, you know, I'll start passing out. Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'll start. Like I said, it's meant for you, you all, I have the physical copy and I'll share.
You gotta say who you are. John Kalis?
So I believe that there was a question, and you're a little moxily there, about whether or not we needed to open up the comprehensive plan, or just change certain things. Like she was kind of mentioning, you know, what people understand, if we're worried about people filling out the surveys and doing it, the idea that they understand this one comprehensive plan... I don't think that everybody's going to do that, right? So is there any way to, with the questions that we're using there, to kind of like, talk about the one that is going to be 2015? And, you know, I guess,
Thank you.
Have another set of questions that we're going forward for our interview now, but that's going to hinge on whether or not we open this thing back up and tear it down completely and start from scratch. You get what I'm saying?
I do, yeah. And I'll be honest, with this, there's not an easy or clear-cut answer to that. Because there's always, as we've found, there's always going to be little gaps in it in terms of understanding and education to it. So we're going to try to do as best as we can. I think one thing that we can do and add to this as well is, you know, refer back to the township website in order to look at that, there's a desire to look at that 2015 comprehensive plan a little bit more.
Segment them or whatever, and then you can give a reference to where it existed.
Correct, yeah. We can add like references in terms of where on the township website, especially even with the zoning regulations. We put a little bit of a definition up there of what we have, what the township has currently in terms of zoning districts. But I think we can add a few more reference points as best we can do. Again, try to keep it to the page format. So that way it meets the guidelines there, but still offer additional information. Absolutely. And truthfully, John, too, I mean, this is, you know, doing this kind of audit, audit survey is a little bit different because usually, usually we ask very specific questions, right? In our normal surveys, it's a very direct question to say, you know, do you want to see this here or that there, right? Do you want, what is the development that you really want to see and really get down to the specifics of it? And again, with this one, with what our kind of goal and mission is here, is to understand what's the, what's the rabbit hole that we want to go down to potentially update? So again, it's trying to help provide information from the residents and from the community to see which path we need to go down.
Who gives final say? The committee gives final say?
Committee.
And do we get a chance to review this and kind of discuss it as we go along?
Talk with them. Steering committee is the voice of you all. So that's what we were talking about last time. You all talking with steering committee members, steering committee members talking with you all.
This is it, man. We're here.
But I mean, we were going to go through question by question, we're going to go through the wording and the crazy, I mean,
No, I don't think so. I mean, I can't speak for the whole committee, but.
I'm sorry, I'm talking, and I can only take one person at a time, so I'm sorry.
So Tom Schrader, my opinion, I can't speak with the whole committee, but I mean, the idea of being on the committee is that you can't create a document like this with 7,000 inputs. It's going to be bad enough with this many inputs, to be quite honest with you. So the idea is that this is the time to have that conversation, right? And that the committee then will determine, this is what we're going to put out to the community. So your answer is, are we going to wordsmith every question with a whole group of people? I say no, it's impossible to be done.
We understand why that, why it could be, why this question could be constructed in a way that it might be one question, but we might take it one certain way and you guys might take it another way.
Absolutely. That's the beauty of a survey. We all get an opinion.
Right, but you guys get to decide.
Yeah, that's part of being on the committee, I mean.
So I guess my point is, you know, the more that we can see this stuff in front of us and we can kind of have, I'm not saying wordsmith everything, but we can look at it and we can say, well, I think that that leaves a question, or, you know, I don't think that question achieves what you're looking to do. I mean, our input is important there as well.
I'm not saying it's unimportant. I'm saying this is the time to do it now, though.
Right, but we don't have it.
But not, I mean, we all just got this a second ago, so none of us have been. I understand that. I'm just saying, but no one has it yet. This is just a draft copy that they're suggesting.
I mean, we have to look at it in order to say, okay, well, I think that this question is leading or whatever, I think it's really important.
So you're suggesting that we create a survey, send it out to see if those surveys are okay? That's what I'm hearing.
We're talking about, I'm saying that if we have it, we can kind of go over some stuff, and we're talking about the topics now. Talk about language, I guess, and, I mean, this is the last meeting we're having, right?
No, absolutely, right, right.
Well, maybe we have some sample questions, and you guys are up there for a reason, right? You guys understand this pretty well, I'll have to say. There's a lot of people that understand this better than me, but I might see it from a different angle than you.
Absolutely.
And Paul, I think the good thing is, over the last couple of meetings, everybody's tried to reach out, send suggestions in areas. I do think, you know, if you want, let me know. I'll sit down with you, we'll go over, I'll get your opinions, make sure it's all heard. That's, I mean, that's, you know, that, I do have one question to defer. I see one topic that was glaring missed in these questions, and I think it's been a hot topic in township for a while that needs to be asked, and that's any questions around senior housing. Is there truly a need for it? That was in the previous survey. It's been a hot button.
Yep, that's a miss.
For a year. So I think it's something that I would like to see added to this to find out, is there a need for it?
No, I agree with that. That was a miss on our part to just have that direct question to be asked.
This goes to your point, how you word it, to just say, do you see a need for senior housing? You're going to get a lot of yeses, and then you're going to get what's going in over in Hankley, and no one's happy because that wasn't their idea of what senior housing is. I think if you're going to ask questions about senior housing, I do think we need to, but we need to be very careful to word what the idea, what type of senior housing, what can we do, you know, and is that what you want? Because there are certain things you can't do. I mean, we can't just vote something and say it's only available to senior, you know, Hankley residents or something. You know, so it needs to be.
Thought through.
Thought through, very thoughtfully, as into how we're going to question that, what the type, you know, and do you want this particular type of housing? But, you know, you can't just send out this general because, sure, the idea sounds great, and then the reality is quite different from the idea.
Okay, I don't know who you're, you got to say.
Chris Suter, Hankley Record. To your point that certain definitions we should add to the survey, I'm going to talk to my editor. If any of you feel that there are several, because we only have room in the paper for so many of definitions that you would like to see explained what they are, and maybe the next edition of the Hankley Record, maybe three, that you feel that the people really don't understand what they are, like what is conservation just? Please come and talk to me afterwards, and I'll see what I can do on that.
John?
Have to be factual, not opinionated.
Right.
Opinionated, okay.
John?
Sean Pupera, this is a question for Arthur.
Yes.
Is it going to be accepted if someone writes, if it's a yes or a no? This, you know, because we had this in the survey for the steering committee. Little writing on the side, yes, but with these conditions, or how are those questions going to be handled? Because it's going to happen, it was clear that it happened in the steering committee questions. And we'll be done with those questions, how will they be handled?
Don't, I don't have a good answer for you right now. I don't have a good answer for you right now.
And can I ask one, to answer a little bit off topic about, I was talking over the break, about addresses versus registered voters? On the Board of Election website on Medina County, there is a downloadable PDF or Excel file of all registered voters. Let's just say there's two registered voters in a home, okay? But let's say your next-door neighbor is not a registered voter, you also have the Excel file of that address list. So merge them together, delete the duplicates. So if Ms. Suter, you know, if she has two registered voters in her house, great, that's, they would get two. If her next-door neighbor doesn't have a registered voter, they would get one sent to the address. That way you're kind of merging those two lists together. I think that would marry both intentions.
But then you're only including registered voters being a lot pit.
No, no, no.
No.
Chris, Sean's got a good point. It is taking the two lists that exist today.
Merging them.
Residents, merge, to do a V lookup, compare the two tables together, and then you have, you developed your final list.
Yes, Paul, go ahead.
I'll let you finish.
I was just writing my notes. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm reviewing the questionnaire, and I noticed you have some nice maps, but you don't have the key of what the colors mean.
Yeah, we're going to add those in there. That was just an oversight on our part.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you though for bringing up.
Important for people to understand.
No, understood. No, understood.
There's a little cosmetic things we'll have to adjust.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So let me suggest this to the steering, really quick to the steering committee, and see if this is palatable for you all. Again, I want to be respectful of your time and also that the fact that we're sharing with you for the first time tonight, because we wanted to get all the input that we received. My suggestion to you all to take under consideration would be to obviously have the time to review the questions. To a couple of the public comment points, if you all had decided that you would want to do kind of a separate workshop amongst yourselves to come together to review the questions and have the public come in and review them with you as well, that's a possibility that you all can do in leading up to finalizing the survey. Again, we want this to be a survey for you. We were looking at the questions in the light of how does this help us give you all a recommendation to consider about what the next direction is for the township? But as I was saying earlier, you know, as has been happening, that relationship between members of the public and you all, that's where we want that kind of back and forth conversation to have. And I want to give everybody the opportunity to, you know, digest the suggestions we gave, you know, think critically of them, and then be able to have a discussion about them before we finalize. So this can either be done, and this is a conversation for the trustees. I mean, this can be done whether you have a meeting, you know, in the next two weeks. So that way that we can finalize and get the survey out with the goal of having it out for three to four weeks and using a meeting in May to show you the results and talk about the recommendations. Or I know that we had a regular scheduled April meeting, and again, this is for you all in terms of timing and with the trustees as well. You know, use that meeting in April for you all as a workshop to come and discuss and come to a consensus on those questions, and then we launch the survey, you know, a few days after that April timeframe.
So this, Paul O'Neill, this workshop, and if we do the meeting, change it to a workshop in April? Is that just the committee or is it open to the public?
I, that's, yeah, it's a public meeting, yeah. But I would, it would be for you all to come together, you can workshop it. You can see that, you know, what the questions are. We have our recommendations before you. And then from that would come what the finalized survey would be.
What is the committee's feelings on this? So I was under the impression that this would be done by the end of April. That was the one that comes.
Correct, correct, yeah.
I don't know what's talking, but I'm really trying to concentrate. I'm sorry. If I will continue a little flashback there.
So really quick, Maria, I mean, it would extend the time, it does extend the timeline, right, as we're, based on this suggestion. So I want to be.
I have no problem having an additional meeting to go over these. If we were to do it in a week or two weeks, myself, I'm not speaking for anyone else on the committee, but I think it's worth some time for us to really study these and get back as a group together and not just say, oh, okay, sure.
Yeah, no.
Paul O'Neill, I got a question on this workshop. Do you need to be here?
No, I would advise that it would be a workshop amongst you all, so you can talk amongst yourself.
Well, I mean, that way you're still working within your contract, and do we have to do it in the April meeting, or can we pick another date?
That's, you can pick another, if it works for everybody's schedule, you can pick another meeting date. Or I was just, I was just mentioning that we had that saved, I think, on the calendar for everybody. It was going to be a topic to discuss, setting our, skipping our April meeting with the intention of that the survey would be out, give a time for people to take it and to respond to it, right? And then come back together in May to discuss the results that we would have had tabulated by that point and talk about recommendations. So you could do either or. You could do a meeting in a week or two weeks if schedule allows for each of you. Or you can use that meeting date, again, I'm being mindful of your schedules because I know that was already on your calendar to begin with. So it's a discussion amongst you all.
If I might, Dave Manley, we know there, I mean, at least I have set aside a date in April for a meeting. Anything else other than that switches my, you know, you had Easter coming up, I've got a grandson getting married, and other people presumably have different things, but I think most of us have set that date in April aside. Why not just use that date?
Well, Tom Schrader, and more importantly, if we only do it in a week or two, we can't get public notice out. I mean, the, you know, there was already some response from the community that it was not well mobilized for people to attend. And if the intent is to get public interaction, then we should certainly not rush it. I mean, I'm not a proponent of extending it out, but if we're going to do it, we should be respectful of everybody's time.
And I would encourage, if people have time to go through it, get your feedback as early as possible because let's say we do the meeting in April. We're not going to want to go six hours. I think we have time to digest, get ideas, as much information ahead of time going into it. So I encourage everybody to, and whatever the appropriate process that the township wants to follow to solicit that. If it's sent to us, I mean, if it comes to me, I have no problem with that. But I don't know if there's some rules we have to follow for additional suggestions. So I want to ask what those rules may be, or do we know?
And let me add, if I may, I'm still happy that if ideas or comments want to be sent to me directly and I can forward them along to the committee, I mean, I'm fine with continuing that method. Like I said, as I was receiving those comments before, you should have all been receiving them. If you're not, please, please come and talk to me afterwards to make sure that you are getting them or you can get the backlog of them, whatever the case may be, but I'm happy to take in those comments, suggestions and forward them along to you, whether they're attachments or in an email to share with you.
With the sensitivity around sunshine laws and everything else, I just want to make sure that we're following whatever the correct rules are that everybody's aware of on.
Yeah, that's what we've been doing.
Arthur sends it to all of you. The trustees are getting it, so it's a record. We have it for transparency purposes. By a show of hands, who would like to have a conversation about this survey that was presented to you tonight at the next meeting, which is April 26? I would say that's majority. The trustees and I will have to have a conversation with OHM about extending the contract and what that looks like, if that's the path that we're going to take. So I'm going to ask that you tentatively, and I had emailed you this, tentatively put aside May 24 on your calendars so that we can allow time for the survey to go out and hear back from Arthur as to the results of that.
Tom Schrader, is there an impact on cost? We extend this, now your contract?
No, no, no. Yeah, no. It's just, it's just kind of doing, excuse me, it's just doing the accordion effect in terms of our process.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're not.
Correct. Yeah, no, it's a good question, Tom. Sorry, David, and then.
Now, is that going to be enough time to get this out to the public and get the feedback and you do all your stuff?
Yeah, that's the discussion that we'll have to have, yeah. We'll have to have the discussion of, possibly, yeah.
Well, we've actually had that conversation now while we have the committee here and our quarter, we're going to need her to.
Yeah, it would, it would probably behoove us to push it to June to give time. Because that was one of the reasons I was going to make the recommendation of pushing our April meeting to May was just to give us enough time, both, again, kind of that three to four week period to get word out, get the survey out, get the responses, and allow us time to tabulate the results of that survey in order to get a package to you. And in that situation too, we want to send out kind of the results packet to you in advance of the meeting. So that way you have time to really look through that more closely before we discuss it.
Do you have a date in mind for that, Arthur?
I can. Yeah, go ahead. I can.
I have a question for Arthur.
Sure.
Richard Pearl, if OHM is going to charge, is going to bill the township $7,000 for these three meetings, I haven't fully, I certainly have not digested this survey, but I have a hunch looking at it. It's going to lead us to want, it's going to lead us to a complete rewrite of the comprehensive plan. Can you tell us, for the benefit of everyone, what would that cost the township?
If we went down that road?
If we go down that, I don't mean to get ahead of myself, but.
No. So typically, yeah, that's what, ballpark, probably for comprehensive plan update, probably looking at between 20 and 30,000. For a zoning code update, I'd want to refer to individuals that we typically team with from a legal aspect as it relates to. from a legal aspect as it relates to zoning codes for townships. And that's something that if permitted, I can I can get word back from that individual and email you that as well. Just because from from our standpoint, you know, there's there's certain things that we do from from a land use perspective, but then we really get support from from a legal team, from the legal aspect of it. And then if we were to do, you know, design standards or if we were to look at, you know, just updating certain aspects of it, it could be anything, just to give just give a ballpark, give a range, could be anything from, you know, five to 15,000 for if we were to do design standards, landscaping standards, something, something like that. So just to give a range to talk about all the kind of what could be the final recommendations for each of them.
I think a number of 20 to 30,000 for a complete redo of the comprehensive plan. Low.
Low.
But thank you for your answer.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my question is, what would be the point of this time that we put in? Because we were under the impression that we were doing an audit, and now we've got questions in our survey pertaining to a full rewrite.
Right.
And you weren't tasked with that, to Tom's point earlier. And is this a complete waste of time and money if we're going to do a complete overhaul of the comprehensive?
No, this is a this is a great investment of money because we also have a grant for $3,500. So it's only going to cost the township $3,500, and it did cost the township something in effort and labor to get that grant. But this is not a waste of money.
But now we're looking at a survey that's another potentially $2,500. We just got a bill from our court reporter from one meeting for $900. So the costs are adding up, and we need to make a decision as to how we're going to handle that as a committee.
I was questioning, do we have it on here? Because again, going back to those definitions, and again, a verse group versus a group that sees, you know, hey, well, let's do another comprehensive plan, sure, without fully understanding what that is and what the implication is in the line of using yes, no, without enough. And back to the how it's worded, you know, when it makes it sound like a very simple thing, it's easy to where you'll get a lot of people, I think you're right, a lot of people are just going to circle yes without fully.
Understand.
Understanding what they're answering yes to. So is that really the correct question to have on here, you know? And maybe this is where we need to to scale back some of those questions. And that's what we need to look at and talk about at the next meeting.
Maybe the other thing I'll add into it is that it's this is a component to what we've done so far, too. So the, you know, the last meeting, the first meeting that you all had together where you were talking about, you know, what's going on, what's happening within the township, development wise, what are some of the critical issues, the discussion we had last time, that I I think the steering committee should view this survey as an additional input to to all of that, to kind of make that decision and ultimately, you know, make the recommendation of which direction to head. So at least from our our advantage point, we don't see the the survey as the end all be all that's going to give us, you know, the the answer of which way to go, which door to to enter into. But as a as a component to all the discussions that that we've been having to date, you know, I think, Jimmy, you had mentioned that really well, that we've been having, you know, a lot of that discourse amongst everyone who's been here at our meetings, among the steering committee, among the residents, you all getting feedback from the residents in the in between time with our meetings and bringing it forth today. So I think all of that kind of comes into into the equation for what that recommendation is at the end of the day.
Terry Walrath, so I I'm not exactly clear on what the timeline is here. So we're going to have another work session, committee meeting in April, at which time we will review amongst ourselves the proposed survey questions and we'll do what hammer out what we want the final survey questions to be.
That's the intention. That would be the agenda. Yes.
OK, and then if presuming that we do hammer those out in April, we would do what then? Send them to you to review and you would mail them out prior to the May meeting?
We would, we would take that that feedback. Put together what that finalized survey looks like based on the recommendations of of you all. And then we would, yes, we'd put the survey out based on the agreed upon method to the public and put it out for at least three to at least three weeks.
All right, so would the.
Push the May meeting. Sorry, Paul Eastling, we pushed the May meeting to June.
So there would be no May meeting?
There would be in in this, we we could potentially move, it doesn't have to be at the end of June per se, that meeting. I know we've had that kind of repertoire with it because I was just looking at the the calendar. Yeah, April 20 April 26 would be what that next meeting date is on the calendar, correct? Did I have that right?
Yes.
OK. If if we were to, you know, everything was was hammered out in in that meeting and we were given that information, you know, by the 27th, 28th, we can have stuff together and ready to kind of launch, you know, by May 3rd, May 4th. And that would give one, two, you know, three weeks would be May 25th, four weeks would be June 1st in terms of the survey being out.
And how quickly can you compile the data?
Uh, it usually would take us about about a week to compile it because we have a couple of individuals who, you know, it's not just myself sitting down and and tabulating.
It's your work, man.
Yeah.
I got you.
So it's safe to say that the intent is to walk out of the next meeting with the survey questions identified, that these will be the survey questions.
Correct.
Without Arthur.
Without, right.
Right, yeah. That's right.
Arthur's contract, we'll skip the April meeting and go to the June meeting.
So as a group?
Yes.
As a township, we'll come up with those questions and then go forward from there.
Arthur, are you going to throw some questions out there for us to work with about senior housing?
Yes, yes, yeah, yes. So some of the the things that you had mentioned and some even the things that I picked out to kind of edit, I will, I will do so. So you have the hard copy of of this and I will, I will share that out for you all as well for you to consider and also send out. You you have all the various emails, but again, we compiled all those emails and attachments for you. So just to aid you in kind of seeing what what some of the other questions were, send that out to you as well.
Sean has a question.
Oh, Jacob and then Sean.
Are you going to make sure that you have enough time to get it into the Gazette because there's quite a delay?
Yes, we've we were talking, we've been talking about what that what that would have to look like.
Gazette is a daily paper, and it goes by subscription, so some people may not see that. The Hinkley Record is a monthly.
The Hinkley Record, one, OK.
Being a disadvantage with the fact that everybody gets it, but the disadvantage is is that the next issue that will come out, April 1st issue is already done, so you're looking at May 1st. So the deadline that I would need to know by April 15th at the very latest to say, hey, residents, you're going to get a survey in the next three weeks.
Yeah, and that's something.
It's super important to be in that publication.
And that would just be one method that we would get the the word out. Yes, yeah, Jacob.
Yeah, Jake Studer, one thing, I know you had a question on there about town center, but I thought I saw repeated a discussion about water and a grant in providing water to the center of town, which I did not see. So, you know, we had a number of people who were looking for that as a separate entity. I'm going to bring that up.
Yeah, no.
The thing is, to be clear, the questions then and the work we're putting in here are going toward conceivably doing an update. Or are we going a different direction here? I guess that's what I'm trying to clarify. I mean, we're putting the time in here. I mean, what's what's the objective?
Right. And so so to answer the first question, which I'll actually start to answer the second question for you, Jake, the there was a lot in regards to asking the question about water and sewer, but thinking back to kind of the mission and purpose of the audit to understand, you know, what is it that we need to do? That water and sewer question seemed a little too specific for what we were trying to accomplish here. That's that felt for our team a more appropriate question if we were to go through a comprehensive plan update or if we were to look at developing design regulations for certain parts of the town, you know, that would be an important question to know as it relates back to to design and and land use. So that's that's the reason from our team's perspective that we left that specific question off because we felt that was getting too into the into the weeds, as we like to say, with that particular question. So the questions that we had put before before you outside of of missing the senior housing question was to help us understand the the direction that that would need to go in terms of updates, if updates are needed, right? That's what that's the kind of mind frame that we were in as we were looking and putting these questions together was again, to answer that question, you know, is a comprehensive plan update needed now? Do we maybe just need a supplement with design standards? Is really the conversation, we need to look at at zoning code, that the zoning code, code, excuse me, and look at the standards and regulations that are that are in the code or in specific chapters of the code.
Richard, Richard Pearl, I think we're going down the right path because the red, we we have identified three major things, in my opinion. One is the conservation developments, town center and the senior housing, which I think are all zoning issues. And perhaps it would be, I don't want to get ahead of myself, if those three things were resolved by our zoning commission, then maybe three, which might take three years, then maybe would be the time to go through a complete update.
Yeah, and and that's 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 a possibility.
Personal.
Yeah, and that and that's a possibility.
And that that's what I'm hearing from the residents that I talked to and the residents that had spoke up at the meetings.
Yeah, and that and that's a possibility. And again, that's why, you know, we're looking at the the questions we were looking at was to try to frame to help us understand what what is that right path to take to go into more detail. Because there is a lot of the questions that we received, a lot of detailed questions. Honestly, I have a little question envy for some of the other projects we're working on because when we've asked public or or members of of a steering committee to help develop questions, some of the questions we've gotten aren't as robust as these. So it's not an an easy task, to say the least, because there there are a lot of specific questions. But even that, you know, again, as I was talking about before, what we're going through in this process is also informing us that this survey, again, is not the end all be all answer to what the recommendation is. It's just another element to help us understand what is that recommendation. You know, I think I've 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 talked with you all in the last meeting and even afterwards that, you know, we've had a lot of specific questions, you know, maybe that does lead us down a recommendation to to think about updating the comprehensive plan because of all of these very specific questions we've received. So it's a hope that this survey can help shed additional light from residents who haven't been able to participate to date and take that under consideration for you all. So what what I have is, if my notes are right, the steering committee coming together for a workshop on on the 26th, having the results given back to us for us to to finalize the survey at least two days afterwards, which would be the 28th. And then trustee Augustin, you mentioned June 14th as a potential date to come together.
Yeah, just because we are coordinating all the other meetings that the town all holds here. The 14th is available at on my calendar, but I need to triple check with Suzanne to make sure it's not being printed for another event. And obviously, Christine, we have to make sure people are available as well.
Do you want to use that right now?
No, it's like, just let me know.
Just, yeah.
Because I'll email you guys once we.
Paul O'Neill, on May 24th, is that big put aside for anything? Or not?
No.
No.
So they could get scratched off the calendar.
Correct. Yeah. And I think in that that timeframe that we're talking about feel, I mean, from from our standpoint, is is feasible in terms of turning around, getting the survey together, having a sufficient time to get out. We'll core, you know, the the marketing material to let people know that the survey is coming out is stuff that we can do over this next month here, right? To to prepare for that. So that way, once we're ready to go with the survey in the format, that can be something that we can share to get the word out.
I got two questions over here. I got a question for you.
You got to say who you are.
David Terry, the downtown sewer and water, you're going to start with the health department because I'm not sure you can get sewer down there.
Yeah.
And we can't get sewer down there with our funds that we were granted anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I just know that the plumber for 60 years and safety tanks, I don't think they're going to fly. First of all, we don't, we have two acre lots minimum, you have to, you have to be hurt the end. I don't know how you're going to do it unless you're going to pump it. The county sanitary does not allow sewage pumps unless they're privately owned.
Paul O'Neill, there is a way to do it if you put a very expensive, like a million dollar reverse osmosis plant in, so.
There's already sewage plant down in Boston and.
Yeah, expensive, but it's, you can engineer it.
Yeah, like there's an engineering solution for everything. It's just how much money you put at it.
Just so I'm understanding this correctly, the next meeting is.
I'm sorry, you got to say your name again.
The next meeting that's going to happen is going to be a workshop, and that's going to be just the steering committee members and Dr. Deopen, or?
All meetings are open.
All meetings are open. It's without Arthur.
It's without.
And I I was able to make just a couple copies of this. I make as many copies as you need before you go. If they did not get a copy and they won't, let me know.
And I will send, I will send out to to the trustees a digital copy so that way if anybody requests it. Again, I apologize that I didn't get it in advance. I just wanted, we've been getting, I've been getting emails up until yesterday in terms of potential questions. So our team just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to to see all of those since we kind of didn't give a an end date in terms of receiving those.
And then Arthur, you'll send me an updated contract?
Yes.
Trustees, do you feel that we should vote on the angel printing? Because I think we should hold off and use Sean's idea with the registered voters and implementing both those and residents.
Perfect.
And further, I noticed that Arthur's survey is in color and ours is in black and white. So wouldn't you have that conversation, too? Comfortable holding off?
I don't have that.
OK, perfect.
One, Paul O'Neill, when you do the maps, will people who are colorblind be able to interpret it?
This guy, I don't like this guy.
Speaking as someone who's colorblind, the answer is no.
We'll talk with you guys more to figure out how we can make sure that.
Numbers.
I can't tell the difference.
Numbers, yeah, the number, the numbers are great.
Numbers work good.
Red green dots.
Talking about white. We can put, we can put more label, more labels on the the future land use and and zoning map for that. I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Yeah.
It'll save you the printing costs.
Yeah.
Tom Schrader, directed to the committee, can we, can we all agree to start with the list of questions that are here versus coming next month and we each have 27 of our own typed?
Yes. I think we just.
Here, here.
To work with this one and then use this as our template.
Yes.
Absolutely. That's why I was hoping Arthur would.
Yeah.
Two, so we're not all.
Yeah. And and just quickly, you can kind of see, too, I mean, with with at least the print keeping, because we're going to have the printed form, that you can kind of see the space that we have for the for the two pages doubles double sided, right? So you can see that we have some relative of space potentially for some other questions, but just keeping in mind that any of the associated maps are some questions that just, it's it's handy to have that associated map, we felt, to see it, again, to talk about context and understanding it. So, you know, that's the space we have to kind of play with. So if you have to downsize those, just keep that in mind. The size that you see on the on the first page with the quadrants is is typically the smallest we like to to go on paper surveys. Anything that gets a little bit smaller than that becomes more illegible than the smaller you go. So just as as you all are talking about that, just keep that, just keep that in mind.
Paul Eastling, that is brings up a question, the relevance of the first question because we all have addresses.
Yeah, and that and that was just, that was just a standard question that we usually do, but it was after the fact that we said, you know, now I think we have some other more simple questions that we can ask to verify and plus the methods that we were going to do in terms of registered voters and and households, right? So that is a question and obviously a graphic we can eliminate, but I think it's great to have it, a happy mistake, great to have it for you all to see because again, that that would be the smallest size that I think we we OHM would feel comfortable having any associated map being on a printed survey. So it's just something now for you for you to use as reference.
Where would the identifier, whether it be numbered or something, go, that just be in the upper corner of the survey?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And actually, that might be something to talk with the the trustees of, there there might be a specific format, right, of of where that needs to go. be a specific format, right, of, of where that needs to go. So, so yeah, and I, we kind of assume, we always kind of leave that upper, the upper corners open for that, that sort of thing, so.
If we're going to, if we're doing this like Sean's idea, which I think is great to get both the registered voters and their residents, will we replace this with a put your address question, or will you be able to get that data based on the number and you don't need the question period, because that makes a difference in how much space we have?
I think we'll talk about that. That's a good question. I think we'll have to talk about that in terms.
That question, that's.
Yeah.
But do we have to replace it with a address question or not?
Probably you could just simply say, write your address. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, it can be much.
But I think that's that whole design that.
Yeah.
Everybody can throw ideas about.
So wait a minute, so we're going to ask people to put their.
I'm sorry.
Terry Walrath.
You got to get what you said and then.
Terry Walrath, we're asking the people to provide their address, is that correct? And what if they do not provide their address, are we throwing out the survey?
It's a question for you all.
I would say yes.
Who said that? I'm sorry.
Jim, sorry, I, I would, you have to have the, you have to, some form of identifier.
I believe in anonymity.
Then you would have data integrity issues.
Even if they're numbered.
They're numbered.
So if you numbered, then, well, the number has to tie to an address.
This is, this is Tom Schrader, I saw a question would be, would, would the numbering list be associated with the mailing list, right?
Yeah, I don't know how they work that.
Yeah.
Well, see, that's what I was wondering, did we even need them to put their address?
No, that's my point, I don't think we do.
Just eliminate the question and not replace it with anything, because you can get that from the.
And I love that you're all already thinking about the questions on the survey and you're tackling it right now.
But.
But yes, you could, you could maneuver in any way you want.
All right, Terry Walrath. So it seems to me if we send out 300 surveys, and 300 surveys come back, what, what more do we need to know?
Paul O'Neil sent in.
Yeah, who, who didn't get a survey? Who should have? Just because you, you know, how do you know that everybody who was supposed to get one got one?
You can't though.
Well, you'll, you'll never know that.
Yeah. I mean, nothing's perfect, right? Nothing's going to have flaws. Every process is going to have, you know, it's never a good deal unless everybody walks away going, damn it. Right? If, if one person's really happy, somebody else is really upset.
Everybody's going to be unhappy.
Yeah, that's, that's basically right, right? And we just have to accept that, that we're going to have inconsistencies, we're going to have questions that don't get asked, we're going to have, you know, people that didn't get their opinions heard, that's just part of being a society.
I, and, and again, I'll add that it's a, this survey is a component to all the meetings that we've been having, discussions we've been having too. And it's, again, I, I, just stressing that the, the survey is not the end all be all.
Right.
It's, it's a component of, of our discussion that we're having, and to, to, to reach out to, you know, members of the public who, who haven't been able to join us for whatever reason, or, you know, allows them to kind of give, give some of their thoughts and opinions in this manner, as opposed to coming here and talking.
All right, so at this time, I'm going to say, if anybody in the virtual audience has something to say, please raise your hand.
While you're waiting, I have one question. I'll take it back, I don't have a question.
You have a statement? I have a question. Yeah. I have an 80-year-old mother-in-law who's lived here a long time. She doesn't have a mailbox in the street. She has a P.O. box. Is she going to be left out? Paul O'Neil.
For using the mailing list from the post office, I would imagine she would get a mailing.
Can you have a P.O. box for your voter registration card?
I, I, I don't know what.
Does anybody know that question?
I don't think so.
No, just give her one year.
I don't believe it. The street.
Well, I mean, I'm sure she might not be personally, doesn't it?
Yeah, no, it's a valid point.
She lives on 303.
Can't have a P.O.
She can't cross the street to the mailbox, so she has a P.O. box, okay? Is somebody who has a P.O. box a resident? Or are you going to be sending?
Well, I, I.
A survey to anybody who has a P.O. box in Hinkley.
Paul, I think this is a perfect example of not being able to reach every, every resident.
It's not a perfect system, right?
Not a perfect system.
There's no such thing as a perfect system. I've been saying this for months.
Yeah. It's just not. I mean, we're, people are going to get missed, and, and I can guarantee you that there's going to be somebody in the, in the community who fills out more than one, right? They're, they give it to their neighbor, I don't want to do this here. You want to do three of them here? You got mine and Jim's across the street and Bill's, you do all of them. It's going to happen, man, it's going to happen.
Is there any way we can mitigate things like that? Is there a way to download the app and send it in and it gets?
No.
I mean, you're going to get ones partially filled out too, you know, that you will, you know, that's probably more of someone who's going to just do the yes, nos and skip everything that involves.
Oh, oh, we can have a, a day-long conversation of some of the surveys we've gotten sent to us that we have to determine.
Who's going to arbitrate all this? Arthur? Yep.
That's why we're putting him in the big box.
Okay.
So you don't have to even worry about that.
I don't have anybody virtually. You, you got a question?
Aubrey Rockman, how do we get his email?
He has cards that he passes out every time he's here.
They've been called.
You can have Paul's email too.
I'm sure I can give you that.
Do you want us emailing him?
Yes, and his information.
And he'll pass it on.
Yes, it's on the website. He's got his PowerPoint from last meeting on the website.